We will call the July 30th, 2024 Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners Meeting to order. The first item, those who are able, please join us and put our hutch to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two on our agenda is the agenda review. Mr. Meyer, please.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
Move to approve.
Second. We've got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any questions? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried. The agenda is approved as printed. Item number three, we have, we have three ditch hearings today, number three, number four. To do County Ditch 60, we will do two separate hearings, one, an abandonment hearing, and then a continuation hearing. So at this time, we will start the County Ditch 60 final hearing for proposed petition for partial abandonment. Item number two is the agenda review. That's on page four of our packet. Mr. Meyer, would you review the agenda?
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I move the agenda.
We've got a motion and a second on the agenda. Is there discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The agenda is approved as printed. Today's purpose of today's hearing is to present the proposed petition for partial abandonment and get a brief summary from the viewing staff and take public comment for this proceeding affected, affecting portions of County Ditch 60. The order of business for this hearing is as follows. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents. We will hear from the appointed viewers, and then we will open up the hearing for public comments. Ryan Hinnaker was at the table. Blue Earth County Drainage Staff will review the jurisdictional documents, please. Ryan, good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Landowner informational meeting was held on May 14th. Hearing notices were mailed to landowners on July 15th of 2024. Notice for this hearing today was also posted outside of this building. And notice of public hearing was also published in Mancito Free Press. My apologies on the date typo. The correction should be July 9th, 16th, and 23rd. I also have a quick memo. County Ditch 60 watershed has approximately 570 benefited acres and is located in Sterling Township. As part of the ongoing redetermination of benefits for County Ditch 60, it was discovered that in informational landowner meeting held on May 14th of 2024, that private tile had been installed, rerouting water from both private lands and a portion of the County Ditch 60 Branch 2 public drainage system. On June 25th, 2024, at a public hearing, an appointed viewer recommended Mr. Greg Olson be given until July 1st, 2024, to have time to complete the petition process for partial abandonment. Based off of public testimony and the viewer's recommendation, the Drainage Authority decided to, decided the final hearing for County Ditch 60 redetermination of benefits be continued to a time and date certain of July 30th, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. A petition for partial abandonment was received from petitioners on July, excuse me, June 27th, 2024. Action requested today of the Drainage Authority. We request the County Ditch 60 Drainage Authority approval of the draft findings in order, granting the proposed petition for partial abandonment for portions of County Ditch 60 Ranch 2.
Okay, we've heard the jurisdictional documents. Now would it be appropriate for a motion to enter those into the record with the change or the addition of Free Press on July 9th, 16th, and 23rd?
Move to approve.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Jurisdictional documents with the correction have been approved. I'll now ask the viewing staff to come up, identify themselves, and present their summary for this proceeding.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Ron Rinquist. I'm one of the appointed viewers that did the redetermination of benefits for County Ditch number 60. Having reviewed the petition, it said it was to abandon a portion of Branch 2. If that petition is granted, it will affect the benefits. I've did a quick and dirty look at the hydraulics and the runoff characteristics. And although most of the time, all of the water appears to go into a basin and then will go out away from Ditch 60 during larger storms, there's an opportunity for surface water to overflow still into Ditch 60. So my recommendation, if the petition for abandonment is granted, is that those parcels not be completely removed, but they be reduced to only reflect the surface water that would come during those larger storm events. With that, I recommend that the east half and west half of the northwest quarter under Disclaimer Trust and also under Greg Olson be reduced to the D acre value at 10% only because only during the 10-year storm of larger would it overflow that basin or potentially overflow that basin. If that is approved, the abandonment and the changes, it will make the total benefits $1,051,082.45.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Are there any clarifying questions from board members on the report? All right. Then at this time, we will open the public comment portion of the hearing. If you'd like to make a comment, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments from the public are expected to be civil and respectful. Please note, this meeting is being recorded and broadcasted live. There's a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give you a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used your allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration by the board. And again, this is only to do with the abandonment portion. The next hearing, we will give a continuation. So I'll ask, is there anyone wishing to make comments at this time? I'll ask a second time, is there anyone wishing to make comments on the proposed petition for partial abandonment for portions of County Ditch 60? I ask for a third and final time, anyone wishing to make comments? Seeing and hearing no further comments, I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and ask if there are further questions or comments from the board.
I have no questions, Mr. Chair.
Nothing.
It would be appropriate for a motion and a second to accept the drafted, drafted findings in order approving the petition for partial abandonment for County Ditch 60.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried. The findings in orders is accepted as presented. Item number seven, that is the, is the end of our agenda. Would it be appropriate for a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. This hearing is adjourned. Item number four on our agenda is the County Ditch 60 continuation hearing. This is, this is a hearing, final hearing for the redetermination of benefits. On page 13 of the board packet is the agenda. Mr. Meyer, would you review the agenda, please?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to this agenda today.
I'll move the agenda.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of approving the agenda as printed, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The agenda is approved. This hearing is to present the viewer's report and to receive comments from all parties interested in County Ditch 60 redetermination of benefits proceeding. The order of business for this hearing is as follows. Staff will review jurisdictional documents. We will hear from the appointed viewers, and then we will open the hearing for public comments. I will ask Ryan Hinnaker again from Blue Earth County Drainage Staff to review these jurisdictional documents.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hearing notices for today were mailed on May 1st, 2024. Informational landowner meeting was held on May 14th, 2024. Notice was also posted outside of this building. Public hearing notice was published in the Mancito Free Press on May 7th, 14th, and 21st of '24. And on May 28th, 2024, at the first final hearing that was ordered for a continuation for today's hearing proceedings. I also have a quick memo. County Ditch 60 watershed has approximately 570 benefited acres located in Sterling Township. On May 7th, 2019, the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority ordered a redetermination of benefits. The engineer and viewers were appointed in order to create an updated benefits and damages listing and viewer's report for County Ditch 60. A copy of the drafted viewer's report for the redetermination of benefits was submitted to Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on February 26th, 2024. On April 9th, 2024, a final hearing date for this proceeding was set for May 28th of 2024. Based on public testimony and appointed viewer recommendation at the final hearing, the Drainage Authority ordered the continuation of the final hearing to time, location, and date certain. The Drainage Authority set the continuation hearing for July 30th, 2024 at 9:00 a.m. in the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners room. Today's continuation hearing is to listen to the appointed viewers, provide their explanation for the drafted viewer's report, and allow public comment to be given for this proceeding. Action requested. We're asking the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority to accept the draft findings in order approving the adopt and adopting the updated County Ditch 60 viewer's report. And the benefits and damages report be updated, and all new assessments utilize the new information moving forward. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ryan. Now would it be appropriate to accept the affidavits into the legal record?
So move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The jurisdictional documents and notices are into the legal record. At this time, we will do the report for the viewing staff. Again, to come up, identify yourselves, Ron, for the record, and review the report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Ron Rinquist, one of the appointed viewers. It is the recommendation of the viewers that the board adopt the report with the amendments as proposed because of the abandonment of Branch 2 for the properties of Disclaimer Trust being the west half of the northwest quarter of Section 26 and to the adjustments to Greg Olson's property, which is the east half of the northwest quarter of Section 26, those being subject to the maintenance of his tile line going the other way and only occasional surface water overflowing back into the ditch system. That would bring the total benefits with the amendments to $1,051,082.45.
Thank you for that report. Are there any clarifying questions from the Drainage Authority?
No, sir.
Okay. Well, at this time, we'll open it for public comment portion of the hearing. Again, if you'd like to make a comment, come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Civil and respectful. This is being recorded, as we said. There's a five-minute time limit where you'll get a one-minute warning, and no one will use the allotted time. In addition, we will restrict or limit time if it's repetitive or not relevant. I will ask, is there anyone wishing to make comments at this time? Please come to the podium. Is there anyone wishing to make comments on County Ditch 60 redetermination of benefits? And I'll ask for a third and final time, is there anyone wishing to make comments on CD 60 red determination of benefits? Seeing and hearing no further comments, I'll close the public comment portion of the hearing and ask, are there further questions from the board?
No questions, Mr. Chair.
At this time, then it would be appropriate to have a motion to accept the drafted findings in order approving the adopted viewer's report, and that any existing benefits and damages records for County 6 be replaced with the newly updated numbers from the appointed viewers for this proceeding.
Move to approve.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion is carried. We have accepted the findings in or, findings in order approving and adopted the updated County Ditch 60 viewer's report and the benefits and damages report that is now updated. All new assessments utilizing the new information moving forward. This concludes the agenda for County Ditch 60 redetermination of benefits. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Meeting, hearings adjourned. Number five on our agenda is Judicial Ditch 15 final hearing. And we would start with the agenda, Mr. Meyer.
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
There are no changes. It would be appropriate to adopt the agenda as printed?
So, second.
We've got a motion and a second. Discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The agenda is approved as printed. Purpose of today's hearing is to present the engineer's repair report and to receive comments from all parties interested in the Judicial Ditch 15 proposed repairs. Order of business for this hearing is as follows. Staff will review the jurisdictional documents. We will hear from the appointed engineer, and then we will open the hearing for public comments. I'll again ask Ryan Hinnaker from Blue Earth County Drainage Staff to review the jurisdictional documents.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Landowner informational meeting was held on May 3rd, 2024. Hearing notices for today's hearing were mailed on July 15th. Notice was also posted outside of this building. Notice of public hearing and public affidavit was published in Mancito Free Press on July 19th. I also have a quick memo. Judicial Ditch 15 was first established in 1917 and is primarily located in Lincoln Township. The Blue Earth County Drainage Authority is the Drainage Authority presiding over these Judicial Ditch 15 proceedings for proposed repairs. On May 1st, 2023, a petition for improvement was received. On June 6th, 2023, the Drainage Authority appointed engineer Charles J. Brandl of ISG to prepare a preliminary survey report for the proposed improvements to portions of Judicial Ditch 15. On February 28th, '24, Mr. Brandl submitted the preliminary survey report to the Property Environmental Resources Department. As a part of the preliminary survey report, repairs to portions of Judicial Ditch 15 drainage system were identified. A separate repair report was developed and submitted to Blue Earth County Drainage Management Staff on May 29th, 2024. An informational landowner meeting was held on May 3rd, 2024, discussing both the proposed improvement and repair options of Judicial Ditch 15. On June 25th, 2024, the Drainage Authority set a hearing date for today's repair hearing. Action requested. At today's meeting of the Blue Earth County Drainage Authority, we are requesting the approval of the provided drafted findings in order, approving the engineer's repair report, and ordering the repairs for portions of Judicial Ditch 15. So I have Mr. Chair.
Thank you. At this time, it would be appropriate to enter the jurisdictional documents into the legal record. Is there a motion to accept the affidavits?
So move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Motion passed. Jurisdictional documents are now into the legal record. At this time, I'll ask the appointed engineer to come forward and introduce themselves for the record and review the repair report. Mr. Brandl, please.
All right. Good morning. Chuck Brandl with ISG. Josh James helped put the report together. He's on vacation, so I get to do the whole presentation this morning. So just going through, we're at, at a repair of a portion of JD 15. As Ryan stated, there was a petition for an improvement. There was a lot of the system that was looked at, televised, and a portion of it that wasn't improved is out of repair. So the report was put together, and it only looks at about 550 acres of JD 15. Again, as previously stated, this system was constructed in 1917. There was an improvement in 1997 that added an additional outlet, and there's a currently a large improvement going on for a majority of the system. There's been repairs to this area consistently throughout its history. I've been out there multiple times in the last 24 years, found tiles that we didn't know of that were repaired. This area is very sandy. There's been a lot of subsidence, and there's a lot of areas that, that, that need repair. So when we look at the whole JD 15 watershed, that's within this red line, we're only looking at the area shown in yellow and a few areas adjacent to that. So just zooming in, the proposed repair looks at a portion of the main line, Branch 5, a portion of Branch 1 lateral C, and sublateral A, along with Branch 3. And I'll just show, if you can kind of see them on this map, maybe the landowners have them. But the, the areas in green are what we're proposing as part of the repair. Portions of Branch 1 were asked for by the petitioners of the improvement. So they wanted to petition for a repair. Since this was going on, we, we added that to it. So the, some of these were requested, some of these were found via televising. So this portion of the system was televised. This map, everybody has. You can see the areas in yellow were televised, and the areas in orange are where there are problems. So most of this branch has some problems. I believe this is the, from what I can find, the third, or this will be the fourth repair to this branch. We found a tile back in 2001 that was completely filled with sand. We found another tile in 2001 that was completely filled with sand. Portions of this were repaired back in 2003, and now it's filled with silt and sand again. At that time, perforated tile was put in. My recommendation is not to do that because we have a history of this filling up with silt and sand because of the sandy conditions. Here's a few of the televising photos. Some deflection, areas filled, obviously filled with sediment. And, and we don't have very good pictures because the water level is almost at the top of the pipe because it's half full of sediment. The existing system sizes were reviewed. There is one portion of the main line that is a 20-inch tile. Because 20-inch tile is not readily available, we can upsize that, and I'm just jumping ahead to a 24-inch tile. That actually changes the drainage coefficient to above what we'd recommend. So it does make sense that this area, at least the main line, will match the capacity of the improvement if the improvement is finalized because... of the improvement if the improvement is finalized because 20-inch tile's not available. The 24 gives us a little bit better capacity. The rest of the repair areas will be the same size, same slope, as those tile sizes are available. And you can kind of see the comparison existing versus what we can construct to for capacities. Back up, just to quickly go over this map again. The main line would be repaired from, now I don't have the section in front of me, but the upper portion of the main line, branch five to the east, branch five lateral A, branch three, which connects into the main line, branch one lateral C, and a portion of branch one lateral A. A lot of the areas that, where these are connecting into are part of the improvement. So this repair might be ahead of the improvement, but later on, there'll be new tile that these are connected into. Repair proceedings move a lot faster than improvement proceedings, as you guys are well aware of. So from a project cost, here's the cost of each of those sections. When you add them all together, it's $511,000. There are no road crossings. As I stated, we're proposing non-perforated dual-wall pipe. We do anticipate, because of the sandy conditions, that we may have to add some rock basin in spots, just to make sure that we have a good foundation and it's going to last for a long time. Different than 25 years ago, when portions of this were repaired, we televise the system and things should be, last for a long time once they're in place, so, as long as we can keep sediment out of it. We did review a multi-purpose drainage management plan with landowners, and I just want to make sure we get that into the record. As part of the improvement, there are some wetlands and storage that are being proposed. As part of this repair, we're not proposing any, but if landowners do have any practices that they want to consider, we definitely go over those with them. But we are doing some things as part of the improvement. It is required by statute that we consider multi-purpose drainage management, and we are looking at these tile repairs. We may have some water quality inlets or some inlets that are raised up, trying to keep as much sediment out of the system as possible. So in conclusion, we recommend that the repair move forward. It's practical and feasible. The system is out of repair, and if approved, we could start construction later this year. My recommendation would be, we could bid it in a couple months, and if somebody's available, they could start this fall. If not, most of the work would get done next year. Just depends on weather conditions, but then we would not have any crop disturbance this year. If it starts next year, we could set aside those areas ahead of time before planting and limit that crop disturbance. So that's summary of the report. Any questions?
You've heard that? Any clarifying questions on the report? I have, I have one, Chuck. With replacing with dual-wall plastic, non-perf, and because of the type of soil it is, will we, can we expect or should we expect maybe a little less problems with dual-wall plastic versus concrete laid end-to-end, or will that not make a difference, the type of pipe?
Currently, our standard is to go to a watertight joint on the dual-wall pipe because we've seen issues with sediment getting in. It's going to be a lot better system than the segmented concrete. And we've put some of these in in sandy areas and had success. Our, I'll say the installation methods now compared to 25 years ago are a lot better. So it should last 100 years plus, unless we have sediment getting into intakes or things like that, so.
And installation is always verified with the camera after the fact to make sure it's done proper and appropriately, correct?
Correct. Today's technology, we can measure slope and deflection, and then we also measure all of the joints to make sure that we don't have any gaps in those joints, so.
All right. Anything else? At this time, I'll open the public comment portion of the hearing. Being the third hearing in the morning of all of us, I believe you probably know that you need to come to the podium. You know, you probably know that you need to state your name and address. You know that they're going to be civil and respectful. You know this meeting's being recorded and there's a five-minute time limit with a one-minute warning, and when you've used up your time, and you know that you're not going to be repetitive or not relevant in your comments. So at this point, I would ask, is there anyone wishing to make comments on the JD 15 repair Is there anyone wishing to make comments on JD 15? I'll ask for a third and final time, anyone wishing to make comments for Judicial Ditch 15 repair report? Seeing and hearing, no further comments. I will close the public comment portion of the hearing and bring it back to the Drainage Authority. Are there any further questions or comments from the board?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair, but I would like to comment on all three of these public hearings and just refresh everybody's memory how important these informational and landowner meetings are. Appreciate everybody that did participate in them and the staff, and Chuck and his staff taking extra time to go through all that stuff before it gets to this point, so, very well done. Thank you.
Hearing, no other comments. Would now be appropriate to get a motion and a second to accept the drafted findings in order, approving the engineer's repair report for JD 15.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. The motion carried. We have approved the draft findings in order, approving the engineer's repair report and ordering the repairs for portions of JD 15. This concludes today's hearing. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item number six, tab number four, is planning and zoning. John, that was perfect timing. It was almost like you were outside the room.
Good morning, John.
Good morning, John.
You saying somebody text you?
I have an inside source.
And everyone is welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but let's just take a TV timeout here to let the room rearrange.
TV time. You guys had me a little worried when I pulled up the agenda for this meeting. I'm like, planning and zoning? It wasn't in July, man. Didn't call them and tell them I wasn't coming because I wasn't in town. And then I got to looking at the review and it's like, oh, good. Not, oh, good because of the mistake. Oh, good, I didn't miss a media.
Yeah, that's important.
All right. I appreciate that flexibility. Please identify yourself for the record and begin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John Consonant, County Zoning Administrator. This morning, we have a couple of business items that are being presented again due to a change in the legal description of the properties for recording of the resolution. The first item is PC 11-24. It's a review by Darren Kaiser Sat for approval of an interim, after-the-fact interim use permit to operate a motorcycle repair business as a Level 2 home occupation. The applicant also intends to offer occasional meditation classes. The property is zoned agricultural and is in the east half of the southeast quarter of Section 9 De Coria Township. The site address is 18556 State Highway 22, Mankato, Minnesota. At the June Planning Commission meeting, staff presented the report. The applicants were present and available to answer any questions from the Planning Commission, and there was no comment from the public. Members of the Planning Commission had no questions, concerns, or comments. Following the discussion, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. And the board action this morning is passage of a resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Hey, you've heard that report?
Mr. Chair, I think this is a public hearing since we are redoing this, so we should call for public comment.
So I would ask first from, before we open it up to the public comment portion, if there's any clarifying questions on the memo or the recommendation from the board. If not, I would open this up as a public hearing. We do have some new attendees that missed the drainage meeting, or the drainage hearing, so I'll just remind everyone in the room that during the public comment portion of the hearing, that you need to come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Comments are expected to be civil and respectful. This meeting is being recorded. There's a five-minute time limit. The county administrator will give a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used the allotted time. In addition, the board may restrict or limit the time allotted to a person whose remarks are repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration. At this time, is there anyone willing or wishing to come to the podium to make comments on this resolution? I'll ask again, is there anyone willing and wishing to make comments on PC 11-24? And I'll ask a third and a final time, is there anyone willing to make comments, wishing to make comments on PC 24? Seeing and hearing done, I will close the public comment portion and bring it back to the board for their action.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve discussion. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The resolution is approved. The next one, please, John.
PC 14-24 is a request for review and approval by Kelsey and Jason Anderson for an interim use permit to operate in the event center. Property is zoned conservation and includes lots 29 through 32 of the Culver Farrington subdivision located in Section 3 Lyra Township. At the June Planning Commission meeting, staff presented the report. The applicants were present and available to answer any questions from the Planning Commission. There was no comment from the public. Members of the Planning Commission had no questions, concerns, or comments. And following the discussion, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. And the board action this morning for this item would be passage of a resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you for that. Any clarifying questions?
No, sir.
Okay, I would ask at this point, we'll open up for public comment portion of this hearing. Again, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Please, civil and respectful. This is being recorded, and we'd ask for a five-minute time limit with a one-minute warning and let you know when you've used your allotted time. And please try to refrain from being repetitive or not relevant to the matter under consideration. Is there anyone wishing to make comments on PC 14-24? Anyone wishing to make comments? I'll ask for a third and final time, anyone wishing to make comments on PC 14-24? Seeing and hearing, no public comment. We'll bring it back to the board. What is your wishes?
Move approval upon the recommendation of the Planning Commission.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second for a passage of the resolution. Any discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion's carried. The resolution is approved.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much. Thank you, John.
We are at agenda item number seven, tab number five, the jail nursing contract. Sheriff Forsall, if you'd please come and identify yourself for the record.
Morning, Sheriff.
Morning.
Jeff Forsall, Blue Earth County Sheriff. I know that you had a work session on this topic. I'm sorry I was not able to attend that, but Advanced Correctional Healthcare serves as Blue Earth County's jails medical provider. The current contract expires tomorrow. ACH has proposed a contract providing 124 hours of nursing hours per week, which would start August 1st and run through the 31st of July of 2025 at a cost of $798,815. It does include backfilling the nurses when they take vacation and are sick, and I recommend approval for those contracts. Any questions?
You've heard the recommendation. What is your wishes?
Move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second discussion?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chair, but just a comment. I appreciate the staff coming in for the work session. They did a great job outlining what we have going on. And from my understanding, this is a huge help to the custody officers as they work through their regular day, not having to deal with this, so appreciate them bringing it forward and getting that coverage.
Thank you. Pass that on.
Are we ready to vote?
Sure.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The contract is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Before you go, Sheriff Forsall, I just want to, after attending four days at the fair with a lot of folks, especially from your department, emergency management and all, I really appreciate the presence that Blue Earth County has at the fair. The Life Jacket event was, I guess you can't say spectacular, but it was, it went out very well, and just appreciated having the boat there. We got to talk about some water safety and things like that. Though there's a lot of things going on at the same time around the county, but appreciate the time and the commitment of not only the deputies, but we have dispatch, other folks there. Appreciate that. I think, I think that's good for the county that they're exposed to all county residents, but especially the kids that get a chance to make that connection, so thank you for that.
I appreciate that, and we are planning on partnering with the Life Jacket giveaway again next year with a lot more Life Jackets giveaways.
I run out of life jackets.
Works out very well. Can get rid of 100 Life Jackets in about 10 minutes if we do the right advertising.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Item number eight, tab number six, on our agenda is Human Services. Mr. Clausen, I'll ask you to come for your report.
Morning, Phil.
Yeah, good morning, Phil.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good to see you all. I have three action items, Mr. Chair, to bring before the board today. First of those is in Public Health, Public Health Emergency Preparedness Grant, which we refer to as FEP, one of those acronyms. This is really to maintain our operational readiness for public health and other partner emergencies with county staff. The grant is $52,519, which is a 9% increase from last year's funding, and the term is July 1st of '24 through June 30th of '25. The next one is under supportive housing.
Be it not exactly the same, would you, should we do these individually or can we do them all together?
You can do them all together.
Can we do them all together?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Supportive Housing, Hearth Connections is one of our key partners in our housing arena. This is the Comprehensive Housing Contract. It covers rental assistance, homeless management, information system, support systems through HUD, and COC stands for Continuum of Care, how we do intake for a permanent supportive housing grant. The period is June through May and replaces our MOU from last round. We had an estimated amount in 2023 of $138,000, and that turned out that there were more funds available, so you see in the next section that we ended up having $177,000 worth of resource. That's now been ticketed back to $166,12, so that's the amount that I'm bringing to the board for this contract, and that all goes up and down due to utilization. And so Hearth and our staff have been in touch, and this is our agreement that we proposed to the board, again, term June 1st of '24 through May 31st of '25. And then finally, there is an appointment for our Social Service Task Force. Tyler Reichel, resident of District 3, is willing to serve in that cap- Tyler Reichel, resident of District 3, is willing to serve in that capacity, so we appreciate that willingness. And those are the action items I have for today.
You've heard the recommendation on those three items. It would be appropriate for our motion to approve all three.
Move approve. Second.
Got a motion and a second, discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, all three items have been approved.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, two topics for the board's attention today, first being detox. You'll see the graphic for 2023 year-end and the amount of 605, almost $606,000 for detox. And then a breakdown, we do try to connect any, I mean, collect any fees from clients directly or third-party payers. So there is some effort in that to the tune of $138,000 to break that down. The next graph shows trending, and you'll see those four years, 2017 through 20, where we had a low and flat amount. That was when we put in YOP in place, Yellow Line Project, which we're going to talk about next. And then COVID hit, and you'll see it spike. Very pleased to see that number coming back down, at least on trending for '24. We hope that will be the result. Mixed in there is some issues with how we do commitments and holding people who are on chemical health commitments in detox, which is kind of a hot topic right now in our community and other communities as well. I won't go through all the talking points, just the holds are talked about there. And you'll see that we also have holds that come in from other counties other than our own. Detox is one of those odd ducks where it's where you're picked up, not where your county of origin is or where you're from. So we have some imports in that regard. We have four detox providers. The range of per diems is from $450 to $1,000 now, and so that gets spendy, especially at that higher end. And then you'll see reasons why people are held, hospital emergencies, prior to being held at jail, and then the holds that I discussed earlier. There were 514 people served in '23, 563 in '22, so we trended back a little bit in that regard. Just so the board's aware, we do give a rack card to everyone that goes to detox as part of their billing, and that just talks about Yellow Line Project and that we have help available. So that's a voluntary reach out. And then for people that have been in detox more than two stays or two or more stays, we actually have our community-based coordinators reach out and contact that person. So a warm contact for people that seem to be struggling at a higher clip. And then once people are admitted to Brown County, we do offer the comprehensive assessments as well. So detox and mental health are the focus of our Yellow Line Project, which I know the board is familiar with. The first slide talks about timely engagement, connectivity to the community, and reducing, really revolving door with law enforcement. So stop the high flyers who take up a lot of time, and I think they're also in a very vulnerable spot that need help. It also helps with our community network, which is item four, that we all work together in a more collaborative fashion. The next slide is the pathways of how we intervene, street level, alternate placement at pre-booking, so right at the jail before they're booked, short-term, one-to-three-day stays if they're mandatory holds. And then this is a new areas that we're working together with the jail on community reentry as well as a pathway on the backend. The slide with the information, I think we've covered most of it. The second bullet is the MMB study, which showed in that sample size, an 18% greater reduction in the risk of recidivism for people that were studied against a select control group. We do have reach outs to Fillmore County, West Virginia reached out to us, and we do have the Corrections Conference coming to town in October, and we are invited to present at that as well. The outreach team is really important component. They meet monthly, and this is where we can identify those cases that are kind of slipping through the cracks or spinning. We know of people in the community, we're small enough that we know somebody's struggling, and it's hard to sometimes get the support around that person. And so this is a multidisciplinary place that we can talk about those cases, and 10 of those cases were identified, reviewed, and planned for in '23. So it's not a huge number, but it is our, you know, kind of 80%, 10% of the people that take up 80% of our time, that intervention. The Yellow Line Project continues to evolve. Actually, that's very true. It's not been a stable thing, and we're trying to keep adjusting to the needs of the community. And, you know, everything's changed over time, from COVID to George Floyd to where we sit now. And I think that's really good that we're nimble and mobile, providing the right service at the right time. Some data just on individuals served, 1,200 people were offered a screening. Surprisingly to me, as a psychologist, is, you know, I thought it was more at the bottom line when you engage and do a full treatment plan, that would be the bread and butter. Well, it turns out that the findings were that if we offer and engage somebody, that the impact of that is one of the more strong findings of all. And if we think of that personally, when somebody says, "Do you need help?", I think a lot of us, myself included, say, "No, no, I'll do it myself." And that's what happens. And there's nothing wrong with that. People say, "I'll go get my own help." But we rattle the cage, we say we're here available, and that does change a person's perspective, that they're not fully alone, or they can't just skate by or come back next weekend. And so I think that net effect is really important. 359 completed the screening voluntarily, went through that. And then that breakout of the 46 and the 44 are people that either engaged a full Yellow Line Plan, like a treatment plan, or they took information and referral. You know, a lot of folks have been through treatment before, and they say, "I'm going to go back." And they don't really need a lot of handholding, but we do try to make sure it's a warm handoff and stay in contact with those efforts. The summary of data, which is one of the last slides, 57% of those participants that engaged in a Yellow Line Plan, so that subgroup that we said at the end, successfully completed their plan, which is a good number. 80% had no further law enforcement contact that we could, that we have some limits, like out-of-state, we might not be able to find. But in six months, 80% did not have another contact. And then the same number, 80% after a year, which I think is really, really good information. That's really what I have for the board today.
Thank you so much.
Do you have any questions or comments?
The only comment I can make is that by being on the detox board, I do notice the difference, you know, with the Yellow Line Project, and they do too.
Yeah.
So the Yellow Line Project has been a real diamond in the rough for Blue Earth County, and I know we're going to work on continuing.
Thank you, Commissioner. I appreciate that very much. Staff do know that the board has been very supportive, and they feel that helps on those hard days.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you much. Have a great day.
We'll go to Agenda Item Number Nine, tab number seven, Public Works Update. Ryan, please join us.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Thank you for allotting me some time today at my non-regular board meeting. Had one critical item we wanted to get taken care of in our action items, and that is consideration of purchase of a 2024 John Deere 210P excavator. This is a new excavator that we were purchasing, attempting to purchase off of state bid contracts, source well pricing. John Deere has a machine that could be available within a matter of weeks. So that was, that was very appealing for us. And then obviously, historically, you've seen the bid results between John Deere and Caterpillar. So we evaluated the source well pricing for John Deere only, knowing the machine was available. It was replacing a John Deere excavator that went into the river. And with that being said, this, with the insurance payout that was received for the excavator that was lost into the river, this does fall within our budgeted allotment of what was budgeted this year for the excavator. So with that being said, I would request approval of purchase of a new John Deere excavator for a total balance of $281,434.55.
Come with approval.
Second.
Here, we have a motion and a second, discussion? Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, purchase is approved.
Thank you. All right, and then I wanted to provide a update, given everything that's happening with the rapid end dam and the County State Highway 9 bridge. So I'll provide a verbal update on that, and then another one again on August 13th. Summary of discussions and actions since July 9th board meeting. Staff have been in frequent conversation and contact with various agencies regarding the dam. Earlier in the month, the flows remained too high for Collins Engineering to be able to safely access the water to monitor, scour, and measure the channels, scour action that has been happening. On July 12th, we spoke with the FERC, received notification that the county would be required to submit another update to them by August 16th. There also had been in discussion with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Dam Safety Office in having some initial conversations. It was really primarily just a notification in that regard. On July 12th, bar engineering site visit, and then we had a follow-up meeting that took, the meeting ended up taking the majority of the day. We discussed the current conditions, discussed development of a work plan for bar engineering and how they're going to move forward. They were able to gain some direction, however, a lot of it is still remaining contingent on developing action from FEMA and other agencies on what's the constraints of the work that's going to happen. And so I think a lot of that's going to unfurl over the next couple of weeks as we meet today, obviously, with several agencies, and then on hopefully the 13th, hoping to bring in Homeland Security Emergency Management. I'll get into that a little bit later. We provided, sorry, on July 14th, we had a virtual meeting with the FERC, Minnesota Department of Natural Resources Dam Safety Office, and the United States Army Corps of Engineers. This was established by the FERC. I provided an update on the dam and the status and everything that had been going on between the dam and the bridge. We discussed the county's options and each of those federal agencies' roles in each of those options. So really, the options that were discussed during that meeting were, A, repair the west embankment and return flow over the dam. That would result in a possibility of this type of event reoccurring and could lead to significant repairs needed at the dam that we obviously had known were necessary from our 2021 feasibility report. Option B, replace the dam with a new dam to be owned and operated, that could be owned and operated either by the county or by a private entity. That one, the DNR, was pretty quick to state that they would require permits for the work to replace a dam on the river, and they were not whatsoever optimistic that we would, that anybody would be able to get a permit to put a new dam on the river. So I think that's a very long shot if that were to be a consideration of building a new dam on the river. The DNR is going to probably be opposed to that for the most part and be very challenging to get a permit. Option C, leaving the dam in place, protecting the new river channel on the west side of the dam. And option D, removing the dam and restoring the ecosystem, of which the Army Corps of Engineers will be here to talk about their program for that today during the work session. We discussed public safety. Obviously, the fencing has been installed to keep people away to extents practical. There's still obviously ways to get there if they go all the way around through the cornfield on private property trespassing. And I am aware that the sheriffs have been writing tickets for that, and it's good because it's very dangerous. I think Eric Weller told me he called a deputy when there was somebody literally standing within 10 feet of that straight vertical bluff. And just the common sense is not there, unfortunately. So we will continue to keep the bridge closed unless it can be verified it's stable and safe to reopen. I'll get into that a little bit later. And then bar engineering was going to start analyzing slope stability and propose different repair mitigation options that we might want to take into consideration. So really, just kind of providing, here's some different options, you get costs and ballpark cost estimates, and then I think that's part of our decision matrix of how we want to move forward. There's just a tremendous amount of variables with this entire situation. Obviously, the dam and the bridge, the dam decision is very impactful to the bridge. And then you've got the, what you do in the interim, obviously, that's heavily influenced by the decision of where you want to go on the dam. And as we learn more about the opportunities that are in front of us, then I think we can hopefully start kind of identifying some of those variables and plugging them into an equation and coming up with something that we can try to find our solution. We also discussed, the FERC Division of Hydropower and Compliance was also on the call in addition to dam safety. So if you remember, DHEC is the division that's responsible for the license surrender application. That's who we sent that to. They want an updated surrender application, and so I think we talked about that a couple weeks ago. They basically have put our surrender application on the shelf and said it's on pause until we hear back from the county. They want to know, do you want to continue with surrendering the license, saying that we're going to leave the dam in place as is? Or do we want to pursue license surrender with the intent of removing the dam? Likely, again, it'll trigger a NEPA document, an environmental document, one way or another. It's not certain, but it's highly likely is my interpretation.
Mr. Chair, I got a question, and I might not be able to answer it. So I'm a little confused. I mean, we want to get rid of our power, we're not going to run power anymore. What's the significance of them having to know if the dam's going to be there or not? We just want to get rid of the permit.
Yes, and yes. I'm incredibly frustrated with this as well. And I've told dam safety repeatedly that them still holding the license complicates this and has made, no other federal agencies want to step in and take the bull by the horns. And I think that's a great question maybe for the Corps today. The other agencies don't want to step on the FERC's toes because the FERC has regulatory authority right now with this license. But that creates almost a roadblock because by them having the regulatory license and not really doing anything with it to get rid of it, it's kind of put in a position where the other agencies are obviously holding off. Yeah, it's obviously been physically disconnected from the grid. It's not producing electricity. What's been expressed to me is there's concern about the optics that in 2020, when the dam failed in Michigan, my understanding is, it was explained to me from the FERC Dam Safety Office, was that there were a sequence of events leading up to that of lack of compliance from the licensee. The FERC pulled the license, and again, I'm summarizing what was told to me. The FERC pulled the license and then delegated the oversight of it to the state. And then there was ultimately a dam failure that was catastrophic as well. And so that was not optically good for the FERC. So they've been much more hesitant to push that burden on to state agencies.
So if we were going to, they want us to define which one we want to do so they can figure out how they're going to regulate it. If we're going to take it out, they don't have to regulate it. If we're not going to take it out, then they're going to stay involved, I would imagine, as far as making sure it's safe, even though they're not going to have a permit on it?
I can't.
They're getting into the weeds here, I understand.
Yeah, I can't fully answer that with certainty because it hasn't been, that hasn't been fully vetted, or they haven't answered that question. But you're definitely on the right track and in the same questions that we're asking. But it is indeed, that is one, and maybe I'll go to my next point.
Ryan, maybe I could jump in just as a, I'm sort of guessing here a little bit myself, so I'll take it for what it's worth. But the sense I have is that the FERC doesn't want to give to the DNR a dam that's in a condition that hasn't been addressed prior to the transfer. So the FERC doesn't want to release to the DNR, basically, when the dam has this breach or whatever that has happened. So they want to kind of get the dam back to a different position or removed, whichever the case may be, before they release their oversight. So they don't want to dump, so to speak, on the state of Minnesota.
Correct.
And I can live with that. I mean, we just, we need to make a decision at the county board level. We always complain because everybody makes us do other things. Well, they're putting that right on our table here, so we got nothing to complain about. At the end of the day, we got to figure out what we're going to do with it.
Agreed. It's the uncertainty that I think is the issue. And with that, we actually, that's where I was going to go next, was the, discussed with the DNR, their willingness between the FERC and the DNR, the DNR's willingness to assume their regulatory role. And the DNR would support this role if river restoration was the desired path, dam removal and river restoration. The DNR would be required to do it. The DNR would be required to do it regardless if the FERC terminates the county's license. But they, that wasn't said enthusiastically. I guess I could put it that way, perhaps. We do have a follow-up meeting scheduled for August twenty first. I believe it's at approximately 2:00 PM. If any of the board is interested, please let me know, and I can certainly share that meeting invitation with you. I know Bob was able to sit in on, and I think Josh was in on the call previously, so it was definitely good to get other folks from the county participating in that and hearing it through different lenses and through those different agencies that we're trying to work with. On July fifteenth, I had a site meeting with Four Rivers. This is a private operator with interest in the situation, discussing the status and condition of the dam. Really kind of on an information finding, but the gentleman was in the area and had some expertise in dams and wanted to offer us some, some support, and I think they had some just business questions about the dam in general. On July eighteenth, weekly call with Bar Engineering, Bar was revisit, will be revisiting their 2021 study with some sort of update. Likely, it could just be as simple as a memorandum. We also talked about the, the river channel study, but I think that's one of the things we're definitely going to have to identify and get going on soon, is to what level of detail do we want Bar, well, one, do we want Bar to revisit that 2021 study on the removal and river restoration? Because obviously, the, several of the factors have changed dramatically. The sediment volume is gone, so you've, you've got that. That was a major portion of the total project cost, sediment management. You, you have, obviously, now the west bank to deal with in some form of restoration there. But my question to the board is, before I give Bar that, that direction, is, is an update of the 2021 removal study something that the board would support moving forward with? And having Bar provide us with some sort of updated, whether it's a memorandum, a couple-page memorandum updating the study with maybe more of a generic cost estimate as a first step, and then we could go into a detailed feasibility report if need be. I can certainly explore that opportunity with Bar Engineering.
I think we have to keep looking at it. We need all the information we can get at this point.
But I also think we have to understand that what we decide or what we have to do with the bridge has an impact on that as well.
And so, and I, I, was just to keep the lines a little cleaner, I was going to go through the dam stuff, and then I'll, I'll definitely get into the bridge stuff.
Yeah, but I mean, it's a chicken and egg.
You're, you're absolutely right. Yeah, it is. And, yeah, the, the decisions on the dam are going to be highly impactful to the decisions on the bridge, and somewhat vice versa. You're absolutely right there, Commissioner. Okay, I will, when we have our call this Thursday, we'll, we'll discuss kind of how that process would unfurl, and I can share more information with you. It's just such an insurmountable task right now that I think they're kind of going, which, which direction do we start in? They've certainly got the resources and the knowledge. It's just, we need to provide them with some more clarity. And until we get that from some of our federal agencies, I didn't want to send them down a fool's path and waste resources. On July nineteenth, we had an onsite meeting with Homeland Security Emergency Management and Eric Weller from Blueworth County Emergency Manager. Prelimarily, it appears that FEMA will pay for the cost to restore to pre-existing conditions, plus the cost of what was lost. So, I, I, the, the $1.675 million grant from 2019 will roll into a new grant minus what we spent on engineering expenses. Our cost for Bar in those feasibility reports could be extracted from that amount, and then the remainder of that would be returned to HSEM. And then all of that would have to roll into a new grant that we'll have to apply for. HSEM is tentatively scheduled to meet with the county board on August thirteenth to discuss those funding options. I, I wanted to allow them, in their expertise, to explain it to you in greater depth than I'm going to be able to, and I haven't had the time to dig through their, the project funding manual that they provided me. So I thought it'd be better for you to hear it straight from the horse's mouth, and they appear to be able to attend on the thirteenth. Questions on the, well, no, I'm not done with the dam, I guess. On the week of July twenty second, survey data was collected, including aerial survey of the upstream river channel via a drone from Mathewitz Construction, and then channel surveys were completed by MINDOT in periodic intervals. So that'll help us determine how much of that sediment was lost and what the new river channel above the water and below the water looks like, so that we can calculate volumes and see, see how much of that sediment was lost. Where does that bring us? Maybe toward the design that Bar had kind of laid out initially with respect to the river channel and the sediment management, things like that. I mean, it, it could be a fact that maybe there's not a lot to deal with left at this point. And now, it's, it's, it's so naturally reestablished itself. That, again, would have major cost implications. July twenty fifth, weekly meeting with Bar. This past Thursday, the level of detail and data gathering needed for the FEMA cost estimate and return to pre-flood condition was discussed. We'll attempt to keep that level of detail very general and high level. Again, going into, at this point, I don't know that I see a lot of logic in going into detailed design of a situation where you would return water back over the top of the dam and rebuild that entire western embankment. And again, the board can tell me if I'm going in the wrong direction with that, but again, you'd, you'd run into that high risk of recurrence again, and the same flood and the same issues we've been dealing with, so.
Well, I'm not an engineer, but I can't imagine, even if we restore that bank, would it be stronger?
I, I think, well, and I'd have to have Bar.
Stronger, I mean, I don't know.
I think it'd require a massive concrete core wall.
Yeah, that's what you have to do.
Very expensive.
I would assume so. I mean, I, I'm not a dam engineer, depending who you ask, I guess. Whether it's an M or an N in there. But anyway, no, not far out of my expertise, but I think amongst our consensus of our, you know, road and bridge engineering staff here that have experience with the dam, we, I can't imagine an earthen embankment being adequate to hold. I think you'd have to have some kind of concrete core structure.
Can you tell me how much land, maybe square yards of embankment were lost?
I don't have that number right now, Commissioner.
Do we have an acreage amount?
I, I could get it. I could get the acreage, yes, an approximation, but I don't have it off the top of my head. Obviously, it was the, the majority of the Caruska parcel.
Right, and then, and then the county park.
Yep. We will have that information as the drone footage.
We talk a lot about this, the silt and sediment that was built up behind the dam and how much of that went down the river. A lot of talk isn't about how much the land was lost. I mean, there's, there's, there's probably as much land.
But it's that it's visible. I'm going to maybe say, and I know Commissioner Pap and I have talked about this quite a bit, the, the Blueworth and La Sure rivers are two of the most erosive rivers in the state of Minnesota.
Absolutely.
And you see a tremendous amount of this happening all over the rivers, but it's just not visible to the public. It's not as highly publicized as this. I know Commissioner Pap had an example of this happening along one of his, the river along one of his.
Yeah, I guess my comment would be, I mean, I've lost that much on the Blueworth River, but it's just been over a course of years. I mean, we have a very erosive river in conditions to where this is not the only bluff. And I would say we also not only, the, the sediment that we lost at the, at the dam site, yes, some sediment behind the dam that was there, but I think we also had a lot of sediment moved down the river that came, whether it was through the lockon, everything else. We forget, there's a lot, that's a big watershed up there, and there's a lot of bluffs upstream that, that the, the same amount of water went through at that point, so.
We, we've had several, you know, obviously, homes in the past where all of a sudden the house is hanging over the river, and they had a hundred feet of backyard. So this is sadly more common than you may think with these two rivers, for sure.
Yep. I know why we have a bluff and a shoreline ordinances. All right, we need to stay on time for everything else. Next point?
Yep, so I'll jump onto the bridge. I'll try to get through that quickly. Summary of discussions and actions, again, frequent contact with agencies. Earlier in the month, flows were too high to get data. July tenth, conversations with MINDOT State Aid Bridge Office on scour monitoring as well as frequency of repairing the bridge piers. Both MINDOT and the county agreed to have Stone Brook Engineering analyze the bridge pier repair feasibility, so the bridge, bridge stability and the feasibility to repair the piers. Stone Brook, Ron Benson with Stone Brook Engineering. On July fifteenth, I spoke with him, and he determined, we determined what data was needed for his full analysis of the bridge repair feasibility, as well as coordination with Bar on the channel flow dynamics. On July eleventh, we spoke with MINDOT to discuss the disaster committee. Review is needed, bridge replacement, and repair funding eligibility and environmental clearances that may be needed. On July sixteenth, we submitted a Federal Highway Administration site visit request form which documented the damages and estimated repair costs. We estimated approximately $18.7 million for bridge replacement based on conversations with Ron Benson at Stone Brook Engineering. Ron's estimate thought was that the initial letter that was provided, if you remember, the 2020 winter report had an estimate of $8.7 million from Erickson Engineering. Ron's thought that that was light, to say the least, and then the fact that you're going to have to have a much more robust substructure, so you're going to have to have a much more robust foundation and piers now if you were to pursue and build it in the conditions that we have. So, he provided me with a estimate of about $15 million for the bridge, and then we added on percentages for front-end costs associated with that. July seventeenth, I spoke with Christine Elwood, who's the Deputy Commissioner of Transportation for State Aid. She is going to be presenting information today during the work session on bridge replacement funding alternatives. On July eighteenth, we met onsite with MINDOT and Federal Highway Administration representatives, including FHWA regional leadership. So we had good meetings with FHWA, and again, Christine will go into conversation in detail about those meetings and about funding opportunities. On July nineteenth, I received an email from Ron Benson at Stone Brook, effectively stating that bridge pier repairs are not feasible or cost-effective, given the current river channel scour and any potential continuation of the scour. So that you, to build a robust enough foundation and pier, you pinch the channel dramatically, which changes the channel flow dynamics and makes it faster and more erosive. And, and there's just a lot of factors of trying to build it well that effectively, the bridge piers kind of hang in there in the air, you know? I mean, you, you're going to have to get underneath it and, and do a deep, a deep footing into the bedrock.
So say that again, say that sentence again, not feasible and?
Not feasible or cost-effective, given the, the river channel scour and the potential for additional.
So then, am I correct, then, that fixing the current bridge is really off the table?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes. Yep, I, I think that it was determined that the, the methods that could be employed to fix the current bridge really exceed what would be reasonable to put into a forty-year-old bridge, and the assurance, you know, there's, there's simpler, more cost-effective fixes that could be taken, but that won't get you down and below the bedrock where the, where the piling are sitting and bearing on. And until you do that, you're not protected from scour. We also discussed, could we open the bridge in the interim? It's, it's not, his determination is that it's not stable enough with the current condition to open it to traffic, and it's not safe. In addition, we'd have to have a very robust scour monitoring plan. I mean, almost every time it would rain, you'd have to close the bridge and reevaluate and wait for flows to go back down.
That's only twenty out of thirty days.
Exactly. But it takes a month for the flows to go back down. Okay. On July twenty ninth, we submitted a letter requesting the state disaster committee meet and review the site. They will be here on Friday. We'll be meeting with them then. That concludes my report. Thank you for the time. Happy to answer questions.
All right, I think what I'd like to do is, because we will spend a lot of time with this in conversation at work session, is to some of those questions I maybe, that we all have, I think, I'd like those experts to hear as well, so we kind of all hear it at the same time.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Item number ten on the agenda, starting with tab eight, is administration. Mr. Meyer, please.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for July eleventh.
Move approval?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I just have a question because I'm not sure that we met on the eleventh. We met on the ninth, and that's probably just a typo. Correct?
That is correct. Sorry about that.
No, that's all right. Just want to make sure. I don't know if you had a meeting without the chair.
The minutes do indicate July ninth. It was the agenda that had the wrong date. I apologize for that.
Not a problem, not a problem. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. The minutes of July ninth are approved.
Next are the bills for the three weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. We're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Bills are approved.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number ten in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Just to have a number of act, informational items for the board's consideration today. Starting with recruitment has been initiated to fill a probation officer two position in our Community Corrections Department. We also had a resignation of an on-call library clerk, so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. Then we filled a care coordinator in our Public Health unit in Human Services, as well as a social worker in our Child Protection Area in Human Services. Then we had promotion, a promotion of a Maintenance Technician Three to a Road Supervisor over the maintenance area in our Public Works Department, so we've initiated recruitment to refill that Maintenance Technician Three. We also filled a Waste and Recycling Planner position as, and then we had a promotion of a landfill specialist to an appraiser within our Property and Environmental Resources Department, so we've initiated recruitment to refill that landfill position. We also filled a 911 telecommunicator position, and we did have a resignation of a correctional officer, as well as a promotion of a correctional officer to a probation officer. So we initiated recruitment to fill two correctional officers in the jail. And lastly, we filled an Assistant County Attorney Criminal Prosecution position in the county attorney's office. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board might have on any of those items.
No questions? Okay, thank you.
All right, item number eleven in your packet is some information about All Seasons Arena. We'll be looking for two actions from the board here today. One, starting at the top, a change to the change order policy. You'll see in the packet, there is some information about authorization that has been granted by the city council to the city manager to enact change orders on large building projects. Because All Seasons Arena is going through a large construction project, and the city is kind of the operational manager of the All Seasons Arena, we thought it'd be appropriate to have this change order process applied to the All Seasons Arena, and it will reduce the amount of activity coming the way to the county board. And so, a resolution would authorize All Seasons Arena change order policy modification, as you see within the packet.
I would make that motion.
Yep, I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion.
Should be. It's got to be.
Okay, we're ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Resolution authorizing All Seasons change order policy modifications is approved.
The next action we'd be looking for is just action on some change orders that have already come forward. There are six change orders totaling forty thousand, forty-three thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and ninety-four cents. Since those change orders happened before all of the partner agencies are acting on the policy change, asking the board here today to approve those change orders per the current policy.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion. Ready to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried. Those change orders are approved.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number twelve in your packet then is a memo regarding approval of a tobacco license to Minnesota Stores LLC, doing business as Snack Attack. The Maple Mart in Mapleton has recently been sold, and this new entity- The Maple Mart in Mapleton has recently been sold, and this new entity has purchased the building and is requesting a tobacco license. So the license, if approved, would be effective July 31st through December 31st of this year.
So, second. We have a motion and a second discussion. We're ready to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carried, the tobacco license is approved. Item number 11 on our agenda is reports from Commissioners. Kip, would you like to start us?
I would be happy to. Mr. Chair, after our last board meeting, we had a work session that afternoon, and then I was at SWCD meeting, that I have not attended for quite a while, they're very busy there with a lot of projects going on. Mayor's and clerks at night, and y'all were out of town, so Bob and I held down the fort for the group. John Consign was there, talked about the cannabis update, he gave them a lot of information, got a lot of action, they had a relatively good turnout, so that was good to see John there. They want to be more involved in how this policy produces, so I think that was good to have John there, giving them an update on what's going on. Had our MVAC annual meeting, gave out our awards for the year for the supporters and the active members in that organization. I made it out to the fair for a little bit, but I was there for the Farm Family Award and the Century Farms. Dan did a nice job giving those presentations, managed to hit the Eagle Lake and Madison Lake parades, and several calls concerning, obviously, the ditches, dams, and gravel roads. That's my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mark, please.
Okay, let's see, on the 10th of July, did have a Rita meeting, Regional Development Alliance, and then we did have July 12th, All Seasons Arena meeting, and of course, we had a county board work session on the 19th. And, yeah, lots of questions regarding water, dam, about every day, yeah.
Hey, thank you. Patty, please.
All righty, I too attended the work session on the 9th, on the 11th through the 16th, I went to Naco and attended all of those meetings. On the 18th, I had TDS board meeting and some strategic planning with them. I too went to the fair on the 25th and spent some time out there with my spouse and saw the awards for the farm families. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Who else?
Well, we started after the last board meeting, we had a work session. Drove up to the cities for a flight for Naco on the 10th, and then we were in Naco from up in Tampa Bay from the 11th through the 16th. During Naco, I, I'm, was Transportation Vice Chair, and we had 13 proposed resolutions and one platform change through the Transportation Steering Committee, and on the 15th, they voted in a new vice, second vice president for Naco, which is George Dunlap from Mecklenburg County, North Carolina. On the 18th, I had a detox meeting. On the 26th, I stepped out and stopped out at the fairgrounds and walked around. And on the 29th, I had a Transportation Alliance Board of Directors meeting. That's the end of mine.
Hey, thank you. I too was at the July 9th work session, then I had the opportunity to testify on behalf of Naco at the Senate Aid Committee in Rural Development, as we look at capacity building for counties. You can be sure there wasn't anybody there that hadn't heard about and seen the house fall in the river, so Rapidan Dam was very timely for that meeting. Attended the Naco conference as well. On the 17th, participated in the Green Sea Agriculture Event. On the 19th, we had three landowner meetings, CD 51, CD 59, and JD 36, and I just want to reiterate Kip's comments, that hearings go so much better if we can get them at the landowner meetings and get the questions answered before the report has to be approved. July 22nd, Rural Minnesota Energy Board met, and then was at the Blue Earth County Fair the 25th through the 28th. And that concludes my report, and that concludes our agenda. At this time, I'd ask for a motion, no, do we?
Adhere.
We do adjourn today, a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
We have a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. This meeting is adjourned.